You get a big boy seat today.
Yeah.
Well, sir, how are you?
Good.
I would send her.
Did you meet you last time?
Yes, I did, thank you.
I do a little background.
We've got to keep our fingers in the bill there and we need to know what's going on over there.
I.
Gentlemen.
You set the example for everyone.
Just a chance to.
Just to win the scholarship fund and raffle them up a thousand dollar Visa gift cards.
Five of these?
Throw it in the harbor.
I need that.
You need a new coach.
No, my.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Couple of fifties.
I didn't know we had an application.
No, we're counting.
No, I can't. I still can't.
See, this is.
You won't.
Me too.
It's just that simple.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta just do all forty.
When you're, when you're single, you walk around, you know, two, three grand.
Have you even got more money in the air?
You know they're coming for you.
Oh, you know, no, no, absolutely not so good.
I was marrying at nine dollars.
I have enough of it at the community.
One given time.
I can't even go to the pool without one.
And now, the difference is now I carry.
Mr. Kelly is not coming.
I don't know.
Somebody's sitting.
Ms. Lee.
I'd standing room only.
If he comes, he's gonna, he's gonna be, uh.
I think traveling matters, so things don't get to me anymore.
We have two minutes, we can start yet. Or can we start with the salute?
I will.
Right, right, right. At seven thirty, I'd like to call the November second planning board meeting to order, please. Mr. Bello, would you lead us in the salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. Ms. Pat, has this meeting been adequately noticed in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bello.
Here.
Mr. Hudkewitz.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Councilman Grillo.
Here.
Mr. Mackinon.
I am present.
Mr. Ty.
Here.
Mr. Velosen.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Ms. O'Leary.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Mishavitz.
Here.
Mr. Sax.
Here.
Mr. Cornell.
Here.
Mr. Lea Archivell.
Here. Pat, you know, Mr. Sax didn't have an excused absence for the last meeting. We'll have to put that in the record. First item on the agenda, Pat.
Memorialization resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, there are none. They're all caught up. Next item, Pat.
Acceptance of the minutes.
Has everyone received a copy of the October fifth planning board minutes, the brief minutes that they were? Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? If not, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I need a second. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman Ty. Thank you, Ms. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carry, minutes are accepted. Next item, Pat.
There wasn't any communication agenda.
Didn't we get something from Mr. Podolak?
Oh, yes, I didn't put it on there, I just gave everybody a copy.
Okay, we'll talk about it later. Okay, remind me. The point has backed out. They, uh, we got notification that there was issues tonight, so they will not appear.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I did have an opportunity to speak to Mr. Himmelman about his letter, and if the board would like, I will send him a letter indicating that we're, the board was a little disappointed that they could not appear tonight, however, we understood, and we do expect, we will expect them to be here in January. How many, how many delays has that been? See, here's the problem, you know, a lot of people ask me questions, being on the school board, being on the planning board, and there's no answers.
Mike, can we talk about this later, under?
We'll talk about it tonight, though.
Yeah, 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 for sure. Under old business, let's move along. Next item, Pat.
Site plan subdivision hearings from SADA Properties, this for a minor subdivision, block four, 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 lot five, ten twenty-two Borden Town Avenue, Parlin.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, I've had an opportunity to review the affidavit of publication and proof of service, and the board does have jurisdiction for this application, see?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you want.
For sure. Since that, since, since that communication agenda was directed at us for not being able to understand what goes on in the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Pressler. I am an attorney at law of the state of New Jersey with offices in East Brunswick, New Jersey. I represent the applicant, and with me tonight is our engineer and planner, Paul Fletcher, who I think the board is probably very familiar with as an expert. The property involved is located on Borden Town Avenue, commonly known as ten twenty-two, lot five, in block four, forty-four. The property is one hundred by one hundred and fifty feet, and my client proposes to subdivide that into two building lots. Two building lots will end up being fifty by one hundred and fifty feet, and they will be conforming. There was a, an issue that came up, which I've already discussed with Mr. Sax, Mr. Cornell, Mr. Leo Balacano, and concerning the need for a variance. We have withdrawn that applic, we have withdrawn that, and therefore, the only thing before the board at this time would be the minor subdivision, which would comply. At this point, unless the board has any questions that it wishes to ask me, I would like to turn it over to my planner.
Please, Mr. Pressler.
And engineer. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Fletcher, please raise your right hand, I swear you in, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, selfie gun.
Yes, I do.
All right, please state your name, spelling your last name, professional affiliation for the record.
Yes, Paul J. Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R. Professional, licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and the principal of Fletcher Engineering have appeared in front of this board.
Can we have a rundown of your resume, please, so we can put it on the record? I know that you've been here, but you still have to be accepted.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that since he's been here before, we accept his credentials.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Ty. Thank you, Mr. Maginot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carry. Continue, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yes, as Mr. Pressler has mentioned, the subject property, ten twenty-two Borden Town Avenue, is the subject of this subdivision application. The property is located in the R-five zone, meets all the oak requirements of that zone, fifty-foot minimum width, hundred-foot minimum depth. The buildings will be conforming to all setbacks, and I apologize for the apparent variance that we were asking for. That was an oversight on my part. My office, I didn't realize or didn't note the fact that the angle of the property lines reduced the perpendicular distance between the sidelines to slightly lessen fifty feet. So, we will reduce the house size by about three, three inches to eliminate that variance. We will revise the minor subdivision plan and the site improvement plan to match that. I do have a report from Mr. Cornell, which I'll briefly address. Number one, notes that Middlesex County Planning Board approval will be required, we will obtain either approval or an exemption letter from them. Number two, recommends turnaround driveways. I think that's an excellent suggestion, it's a very busy road on Borden Town, so we'll, we'll provide that, that maneuverability. I will correct the soil erosion plan to reflect Saraval. I did not realize at the time that Saraval is exempt from freehold soil conservation district requirements. Number four, we will revise the tree preservation calculations to, to reference Saraval correctly. Number five, I just have a question for Mr. Cornell. It's our intention to perfect this subdivision by de-filing of deeds. We will not be filing the subdivision map that was shown. Do you still need these requirements that you've elicited under the map filing law?
Mr. Chairman, I think there was an app, there was a plan sheet submitted that was considered a minor subdivision map, and that's why we looked at it that way. If, if that's pulled from the set and you file by deed, and that's not part of the record, then that's fine, you can eliminate it. So, as long as that subdivision sketch plat is, is not part of the package, then we don't have to address it.
I think that might present a problem in that I'm a licensed engineer, not a licensed surveyor. Subdivision plan must be signed by a surveyor.
Let's, uh, my surveyor's the one that raised the question, so let's, we'll, we'll speak with him about that and see how we can, if you have to take care of it, I guess we'll work with you on that. If you don't, then we can eliminate it.
Okay, very good.
That's fine.
But, Mr. Fletcher, the plan is to do it by deed?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Number six, we will certainly agree that any improvements will be installed in accordance with the requirements of the borough standards. We'll make a note to that effect on the plans, and we will obtain lot numbers and street addresses from the tax assessor's office, and we will modify the meet and balance descriptions to correctly reference the plan. I think that was the balance, is there another page?
No, our planners report.
My only comment was that there's, there was a combined side yard, and now you've eliminated that, so it's a totally conforming subdivision, so I have no.
I, I don't think there's much to address, and I don't think it's necessary to, you know, show other lots of similar sizes, since we're fully conforming.
Not if you've got a fully conforming application, so, I agree.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fletcher, from our board?
If I may add, we've provided proposed grading that will make sure that there's no adverse impact to adjoining properties. It's higher at the rear than at the front, and we're providing swales and grading to get the water to the, to the gutter line of Borden Town Avenue, and then to the storm sewer systems.
Thank you. Mr. Pressler, do you have any other witnesses to call?
I do not.
Okay, then I need a, we need a motion open to the public.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we open to the public.
Thanks, Vice Chairman Ty, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carry. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this issue? Please come, state your name, spell your last name and your address.
Sir, let me, let me just swear you in first, please raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, selfie gun. All right, please state your name, spelling your last name and address.
Mr. Corney. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Pat, did you get it?
The address, I didn't.
Excuse me, Pat, our secretary didn't get the address. What's the address?
Ten twenty.
Ten twenty.
Thank you.
Shouldn't be a mic up there.
Oh.
Hey, there's a microphone right there, sir, okay.
Uh, I was just, I have no idea what's going on next door to me. What, what is, what is actually happening next door? I know they're gonna put a house up, or...
Mr. Chairman, if you want, I'll, I'll respond to Mr. Corney. The applicant is going to be demolishing the existing house, and he's going to be, the property, there's a request to subdivide the property, to put two houses now on this.
Single-family houses?
Single-family houses.
Okay.
There are no variances required, so it's what we call a fully conforming application.
Okay. I have a couple of concerns, like with the demo. I know that the house has asbestos siding on it. I was just worried about, wondering about the abatement, how they're gonna do that, and also, I know there's, um, there's a buried oil tank on the property, too. Just, you know, concerned about that also.
All right, so when they, generally what happens is when they apply for a construction permit, demolition permit, those issues will be raised, and they'll have to be addressed, and obviously, the appropriate safeguards, which are mandated by the state, would have to be involved.
Okay. Also, before the demo, I know the, the neighbor on the other side has been having issues with, with vermin from the house, so I would like to suggest, before they do any kind of demo on a house, is, you know, get like an exterminator in there to take care of any problems, because once they start downing the house, it's just gonna spread out throughout the neighborhood.
We, we can make that part of the agreement.
No, no, Judge.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did that with Saraval Bar when they knocked that down, the same thing?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's just.
No problem.
We'll add that as a condition.
Yeah, what, what are the sizes of the house? I mean, how, how close to my property line are they gonna actually be?
Jay, Mr. Cornell. Mr. Chairman, the proposal is ten feet, which is, the ordinance actually allows eight, they're proposing ten.
It's, it's ten feet from their property line?
Ten feet from the property line to the house, yes.
That's where the house starts, okay.
Yes.
All right, now, that's, that is all my questions. Did you have any questions? What's that?
You have to come up, please.
I, I think the question was, where's the house gonna face? It's gonna, well, I'm assuming the front will be facing Borden Town, so.
Both houses are gonna face Borden Town Avenue.
And they're gonna be like one in the back, one in the front?
No, no, it's side by side.
Side by side.
The existing property's a hundred feet wide, they're splitting it in half, so it can have two fifty-foot wide lots.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's all, that's all my questions.
Now you know.
Thank you.
I've carried my whole lives without.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? If not, I need a motion to close.
Seeing nobody from the public, I might make a motion, we close.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Ty, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Grillo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Pressler, you have the floor.
Move the application.
To the mic, please. You're not getting away, you know, you, you know, just, you're not getting away that easy. No, no, no.
Move the application. Well, you can move it, but you're requesting that we move it. All right, that's fine.
I'll take that request, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, seeing that this is a complete application, to make a motion to pass it.
With, Tom?
Uh, with, with all the.
Conditions?
Conditions.
Of approval?
Yes.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Pressler, you have the floor.
Move the application.
To the mic, please. You're not getting away, you know, you, you know, just, you're not getting away that easy. No, no, no.
Move the application. Well, you can move it, but you're requesting that we move it. All right, that's fine.
I'll take that request, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, to seeing that this is a complete application, to make a motion to pass it.
With, Tom?
Uh, with, with all the.
Conditions?
Conditions.
Of approval?
Yes.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Can I have a roll call, please? Pat?
Mr. Bello.
Yes.
Mr. Hudkewitz.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Councilman Grillo.
Yes.
Mr. Mackinon.
Yes.
Mr. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Velosen.
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Dr. Mishavitz.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roger.
What? You're not getting out of here, you were out of here.
Not the first one, I'm worried about. The last one.
He's the one. Uh, next item, ladies and gentlemen, can you please move out so we can continue the meeting? Thank you.
Yeah. Rushy, rushy, rushy.
Cubs. I wanna see the Cubs win. Just so Bill Murray will go nuts. Yeah. Next item, Pat.
All business, new business, administrative matters.
Okay, it's your turn, Michael. Uh, Mr. Maginot?
Yes, I, I just wanted to bring up my concerns, because I, you know, support this project since the beginning, it's been some full years that we've been talking about, about this. I know that several must be just frustrated with the delays, because you guys get shit up a lot, too. My concern is, I remember here, I think it was two, three years ago.
Mike, before, speaking to the microphone, that was, thank you.
Two, three years ago, there was a representative from Bass Pro here, if you recall, and technically, that store should've been open right now. I know there's been delays, I know there was an issue with the Department of Transportation and all that signed out. My concern is, as we keep progressing, the fiscal impact statement is changing, because things are changing in town, and one of the things that I wanted to ask the developer today is, I'd like to see an updated fiscal impact statement on the project, because that's the one that I had kicked back twice because of inaccuracies in there, and that's, that's one of the concerns. And, you know, I'm also interested in, since the Board of Education has established a Blue Ribbon Committee to look at what we're doing to house additional schoolchildren, I need to understand, you know, what the latest impact of that's gonna be. What are the configuration of the houses? Are these gonna be rental units? Those types of things. And I was hoping to gain that, because we do have a, a Blue Ribbon Committee meeting on the seventeenth of this month, and I was hoping to have some information from the point. And again, I wanna make it clear that I support this project, I think it's a good thing for Saraval, and I was hoping to do my Christmas shopping at Bass Pro this year, but that doesn't look like it's gonna happen.
Mike, Larry, can we put a request for that impact study when they come?
Yeah, in fact, what I'll do is, I, and I think I mentioned, I was, I'm gonna send a letter to the applicant, to their attorney, Mr. Himmelman, and I'm gonna indicate that, you know, we expected them to appear this evening, we were disappointed they're not. I will also tell them that, quite frankly, one of the conditions in that last approval was that they had to come back every six months, and that if they failed to appear for that January meeting, they'd be in violation of that, and obviously, there can be consequences. But I will request that they provide us in advance of that meeting with the new fiscal impact. Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm not being adversarial, I just want to understand. No, I understand. And while I have the floor, I just wanted to ask if, if it's possible for our Board Secretary, can we find if, Jay, if you have a copy of the impact statement from Town Lake? I couldn't find it in my file, because I, I just wanted to make a point on that fiscal impact statement, and what they told us, the impact on the school just to the reality of how many kids were picking up out of that development. And right now, as of today, it's two hundred and thirty-eight children come out of that development.
What'd they tell us?
Two hundred and thirty-eight. Uh, it was less than a hundred, is what I was told. So, I just wanna make a point that fiscal impact statements are theories, okay, not, not reality, so. If we can find the copy of that, and if I can get it, I'll pick it up, you know, before November seventeenth, I'd appreciate that. If that's something that's readily available. I couldn't find it in my file of stuff, so I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I'll check our files, see if I can go through and find it.
I appreciate it. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Vice Chairman Ty.
I had a conversation with the chairman the other day, and he told me that, you know, they probably weren't gonna come in, and I was a little disappointed, but the day before, I drove over the parkway, and I was really pleased to see what's going on. I mean, it finally looks like a job site. It looks like you can see where the road's gonna come off of the parkway, so we're just, you know, watching the soap operas until it's done, but every day, it looked a little better.
Yeah, they, Jay said that in their letter, they said they were, they were working out financial arrangements with prospective developers or just investors. I'm very frustrated with Bass Pro. I'm very, I shouldn't say it, so I'm very frustrated with O'Neill. And I, I'm not gonna go into all of this stuff right now, because I really think they need a beating. I really think that, that they've kind of led us down a primrose path. Everything that they've said they were gonna do, they didn't do, or they haven't met. The last time they were here, they said that in between, oh, we're gonna be here before six months, because we're gonna have a, a site plan for the retail. Well, that's not done. Last week, I got a sales flyer from Bass Pro, and I purchased something, and I called, and this very nice lady by the name of Regina answered the phone, and we were chatting, and I said, "Well, where's your geographical location?" And she says, "Oh, I'm in Springfield, Missouri." And I says, "Oh, yeah? I said, "I've been in Springfield, Missouri, I was, I went to school there for a year." And she says, "Oh, yeah, I know who you are. I know where you went. You went to, you know, Simon Kite." She said, "Oh, yeah, yeah, you went to Logan." I said, "Yep, that's where I went." So, in that conversation, I says, "And we're getting a new Bass Pro." And she says, "Oh, yeah, where?" And she said, "Let me pull it up on my computer and see." Well, her computer says it's late eighteen that they're gonna open, so...
I think that's realistic, if they haven't broken ground, as we're speaking.
You know, yeah, well, but again, you know, O'Neill, the last times, they kept saying seventeen, seventeen, seventeen.
Well, I, I think the good aspect is, I know, Jay, that the, the entrance and exit from the Garden State Park is condition of occupancy. I don't think that's as long of a, gonna be a problem.
That's, that's correct.
I think that's gonna be complete.
And that's gonna be done before everything else.
That was a specific requirement, that be in place before they could get a CO for the Bass Pro.
And what happens if that's built and constructed, ready to go, and then nothing else happens, or it's late even further? I mean, that's, you know, that's the concern.
No. We don't, listen, luckily, you know, this time, the state is ahead of the private, it's unusual.
I will send a very strongly worded letter from the board, and I'll request that fiscal. You can use big words? I'll use big words.
Legal words?
I'll use legal words.
Okay.
Okay, good luck.
On the communication agenda, we, I, we got a letter from a guy by the name of George Podolak, that he watched the last meeting and was unable to understand anything, because the mics, we weren't speaking into the mics. We've had this issue before.
He's right, we should use the mic.
Hello, hello. You know, I, and, you know, we go, we go, we've gone over this time and time again, but I will make an effort to mention or to notify everybody if I don't think that they're speaking into the mic. Now, I need a motion to open to the public.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I need a second. Thank you, Ms. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carry. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Anyone from the public wish to speak? If not, I need a motion to close public.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Thank you, Councilman Grillo. All those in favor?
There was a specific requirement that be in place before they could get a CO for the Bass Pro.
And what happens if that's built and constructed, ready to go, and then nothing else happens, so it's late even further? I mean, that's the concern.
No. We don't... Listen, luckily, you know, this time, the state is ahead of the private... It's unusual.
I will send a very strongly worded letter from the board, and I'll request that fiscal...
You can use big words?
I'll use big words.
Legal words?
I'll use legal words.
Okay.
Okay. Good luck.
On the communication agenda, we got a letter from a guy by the name of George Podolak that he watched the last meeting and was unable to understand anything, because the mics... We weren't speaking into the mics. We've had this issue before.
He's right. We should use the mic. Hello? Hello?
You know, and, you know, we go... We've gone over this time and time again, but I will make an effort to mention or to notify everybody if I don't think that they're speaking into the mic. Now, I need a motion to open to the public.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Need a second? Thank you, Ms. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carry. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Anyone from the public wish to speak? If not, I need a motion to close public.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Grillo. All those in favor? Aye, all those opposed. Motion carry. Mr. Cornell? The next meeting is...
Chairman, your next meeting is December 7th, and you have Public Service, which has a regulator station located within the Town Lake Development. They're looking to go through and expand that, so they're coming in for site plan approval. Also, Mr. Chairman, if I might, there may be a couple other applications. There's some things in the pipeline that may be ready for that December meeting, so one is definite. There may be a couple others.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. I don't know... I don't know if... Pat, were you notified who's up and whose terms are up?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Well, I would... I'm every year, so I would. I never got an application, though.
I'm... I know that I'm up also.
And I haven't been aggressively pursuing one, either.
Oh, you're not getting off that easy. I'll forge one for you.
Do you have an application with you? Do you...
Check with the clerk.
Yeah, well, Pat'll check with the clerk.
Usually, we get one in the mail from the clerk.
Do you get it in the mail?
No, I never got it in the mail.
I got it in the mail.
You did?
Yeah, I got it once. I didn't get it this year.
Yeah.
You did it, yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll...
You can just put one with the impact statement from Town Lake. That'd be good. Stick it in there.
Get it all at once, right?
Save the time.
You just email me. I'll come pick it up. You know, we need to.
You can... You probably can email it and put it... Fill it out online and send it back.
I'll do that.
Anyway, you know, that's for all of us who are up. Any other questions, comments? If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Ty. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carry. See, Ms. Lee, we didn't even...
Thank you all to you that purchased the raffle ticket.
We didn't pick on you, because your instigator wasn't here.
I didn't get in any trouble. You're so right.
Where's Mr. Kelly? Where's Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Kelly is... I'll tell you later.
Okay. Jay, is Town Lake completely built out? All the homes are built? All the lots are done?
Yes, all section, original section, the second phase, and also the...
The apartments... The apartments are... They're all done, too?
I'll see you Saturday.
No, they're not. They're nice.
Got a bunch of guys.
Yeah.
Then Tuesday.
Wayne's coming.
Is he? Oh, yeah, we'll be there.
Wayne's coming. Michael wanted me to get Subways. I says, you can buy all the Subways you want. I got the Rip guy coming.
I'm letting him go on vacation.[1386.12]